Good morning. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to the council chambers. This is a meeting of the City of Los Angeles City Council. Today is January 20th, 2012. Council meets three times per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. For those that cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website. Today is Friday Ceremony Day. We have many special guests in the chamber this morning. I do know several of my colleagues have several presentations. And Mr. Clerk, who do we have as a first presenter?
Mr. President, I believe Council District 10 is first on the list. If Mr. Weston is ready, we could go to them.
Well, we do have several council members already here, and I want to thank them for being here. We have Councilman Alarcon, Councilman Garcetti, Councilman Huizar, Councilmember Coretts, Councilor Rosendahl, Councilman Zine, Councilman Weston. We need a few more of our colleagues to come down to the horseshoes so we can make quorum. As Councilmember Weston assembles his first presentation, I think we're in for a treat.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Everyone that is here today, I'm sure had an opportunity to view the tragic scenes from the earthquake that occurred in Haiti, and how difficult the difficulty that that country has been going through to try to rebuild itself. We have a treat today. We've got a bunch of young people that are the Haitian Refugee Choir, and they're visiting the United States for the very first time. They're under the leadership of Pastor Sam Suk Back. They performed at the Martin Luther King Parade this past Monday. They're gonna perform for you today. So, Los Angeles, I would like for you to give a warm welcome to the Haitian Refugee Choir. Thank you, Mr. President, members, and I want to thank the children of Haiti. And when you sang "God Bless America," tears almost welled up in my eyes. You have to remember, good people, that some of these childrens lost their entire family. They lost their homes, and now they are struggling to rebuild their lives. So let us pray that God bless them and keep them. One more time, let's give them the type of round of applause that they deserve. Again, thank you, Mr. President, members. I get to do a back-to-backer today. Bring Pinky up here. Today is Pet Adoption Friday. I have a Chihuahua mix. What is Pinky? Is he a boy or a girl? Pinky is a girl. Well, I knew, growing up, I knew a guy named Pinky, so... Well, anyway, Pinky is a little four-year-old Chihuahua mix. That's as cute as she can be. She's looking for a home. I say this all the time, but I can't emphasize it enough. We do have a 100% adoption rate ever since we started this Adopt a Dog Friday. And I urge the people that are here today, in the gallery, in the council, listening, on the radio, watching us on television, to please call 888-452-7381 if you are interested in adopting Pinky. And if you call and Pinky has already been adopted, don't feel bad. We have hundreds and hundreds of companion animals in our shelters that are begging, crying out to each and every one of you to save their lives. Because we cannot keep, we cannot hold these dogs forever. We are dependent on Los Angelinos to pitch in and find a home for the animals that we have. We will keep Pinky here for a bit in hopes that someone will come down and adopt her. I believe, did Pinky come from my shelter?
Yes.
And Pinky came from my shelter. So if you adopt Pinky, I'll pay $10 of the fee to buy the dog. Because I definitely want to get all of the dogs that I can off the streets and into safe and loving homes. So remember, Pinky will be in the back, she is available, and the councilman of that district will pay $10 towards your acquisition of your companion animal. Mr. President, members, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Weston. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the responsible that supported you, Mr. Weston, bringing the youngsters and sharing their talent with us, and thank them for taking that role and bringing them to our chamber. Our next speaker and presenter is Council District 14, Councilmember Huizar, Bringing Back Broadway. And then we have District 9, the Colburn School following.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, I am very pleased to stand here today as we celebrate important milestones for two projects that I hold near and dear to my heart. The Bringing Back Broadway Initiative was launched in January of 2008, and some of you joined us at the Los Angeles Theater to announce the beginning of this 10-year plan for the revitalization of the Broadway Historic Theater District. Today, we celebrate the four-year anniversary of this 10-year plan. The other portion of today's presentation is about the downtown Los Angeles Streetcar. Los Angeles Streetcar, Inc., a public-private partnership formed by property owners, business, and civic leaders to advance the streetcar from the private side while we worked on the public side, was founded in January of 2009, and the L.A. Streetcar, Inc. is celebrating its third-year anniversary today as well. I have with me today just some of the folks who work with us each and every day on Bringing Back Broadway and the streetcar, and I look forward to sharing with you what their contributions have been thus far. But first, I want to give you an overview of where we are with Bringing Back Broadway as we celebrate the four years of its success. People sometimes ask me, why am I so committed to improving Broadway? And the answer for me is easy. See, Broadway was once the heart and soul of not only downtown, but all of the city. That's where everyone went to for entertainment, for shopping, and for everyone to get together and call themselves and mingle with other Angelinos. And downtown today continues to be Los Angeles's economic driver. 500,000 people come to downtown each and every day to work. About 50,000 people live downtown now, which is a huge jump from 10,000 just a decade ago. There's no doubt that downtown is important to our entire city. And like I said, just as downtown is important to our city, Broadway is important to the entire downtown. Broadway is one of the most important streets in our city with generations of creative and commercial history, but it needs support so that it can be vital and thrive for generations to come and make all of downtown better as well. For far too long, Broadway has been a dividing line between revitalizing areas of downtown. It's often referred to as the hole in the donut. Both Bringing Back Broadway and the downtown L.A. Streetcar will help us address those disconnects to create a cohesive, successful, vibrant urban center that offers something for everyone day and night. But I want to be very clear, this work is not easy, and that's why this is a 10-year plan that we have engaged in. When I first started Bringing Back Broadway, some people told me I was crazy. I was laying out a 10-year vision on a four-year term. But I believe that kind of long-term vision and long-term planning and leadership is necessary and has been missing from our city too long, and this long-term vision can really make a difference. In our first couple of years, we laid the foundation for the growth and progress we want for Broadway and downtown. We wrote and created city policies to help us guide development and incentivize revitalization. We got input on where things should be headed and designed plans to help get us there. Now, as we celebrate the fourth year of a 10-year plan, we have adopted a major planning ordinance. We have two more planning policies being drafted. We have moved two of our major projects, both the Streetscape Plan and the Streetcar Plan, into their official environmental review, and we have welcomed almost a dozen new businesses to Broadway. That's a lot of progress in just four years. And let me speak a little bit more about each of these projects. First, the Broadway Streetscape Master Plan. After an extensive year-long public process with workshops, meetings, and hundreds of individual feedback imprints, we unveiled a gorgeous plan for a brand-new Broadway Streetscape Master Plan. This plan prioritizes people over cars and sets the stage for the best showcase for a modern streetcar transportation system I can't imagine. The Department of Transportation and Metro have worked very closely with us to develop this plan and make sure these innovative ideas work. The Streetscape Master Plan is now in the environmental review, and in fact, I believe the M&amp;D is being circulated in this month. We face a big challenge, however, because some of the infrastructure issues on Broadway. The basements of Broadway's buildings extend underneath the sidewalks and are often, after more than 100 years, the concrete and subterrages are literally cumbering. We've had some sinkholes and faced a daily threat of a serious accident, which is why we continue to aggressively seek the remaining funding needed to improve the infrastructure on Broadway, which carries more than 25 million people a year over its sidewalks. Secondly, the Broadway Entertainment Overlay and Design Guide. Thanks to the work that so many people had done over many years at the L.A. Conservancy and CRA, we had a great head start on what ended up being a big piece of policy for the Bringing Back Broadway Initiative. The ordinance we refer to as the Broadway Entertainment Overlay and Design Guide was in front of the City Planning Commission almost exactly one year to the date of the first meeting convened to write it. Thanks to the Planning Department, both the Office of Historic Resources and the Community Plan Division, and now the Plan Implementation Division, for all their work in getting it written, adopted, and now reviewing compliance as each project comes through, we're starting to see improvements all along the street. And we're also working on a historic commercial adaptive reuse ordinance. You know, we have about 1 million square feet of available space in the upper floors all along Broadway. And just like the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance for Residential has made a difference in more people moving to downtown, we hope the Commercial Adaptive Reuse Ordinance will allow the owners to more efficiently and conveniently and less expensively re-adapt their buildings and make those million square feet of available space in the upper floors of Broadway available. And finally, business assistance. We're challenged with a vacancy not only in the upper floors, but on the ground floor as well. Three years ago, Broadway's ground floor retail vacancy rate was approaching 20%. We have been working aggressively to recruit and assist new businesses to come and fill those vacancies and to support and help the businesses which are already there so we prevent more vacancies. This means close coordination with our city departments, Building and Safety, in case of Management, Perimetering, Restaurant Express, and other divisions, the Bureau of Engineering, and especially the Department of Water and Power, since powering up historic buildings with modern amenities is no easy feat. It is thanks in large part to the department's support and assistance and our strong relationships with the three different business improvement districts which serve Broadway that I can tell you Broadway now has new restaurants coming in and our retailers are getting stronger. It seems like every month, more and more good news gets announced on Broadway, and each and every one means less vacancy and more jobs. Just this month, we announced that Ross Dress for Less is going to locate in the historic Woolworths Department Store. That is very, very good news. Famima and Royal Clayton's are coming to the Broadway Spring Arcade building. Figaro Bistro from Los Feliz is opening its second location in the historic Shaver Cafeteria on Broadway. The team behind Umami Burger will open Ume Kitasin on Broadway in just a few weeks. And Two Boots Pizza from New York is under construction. And our beloved Clifton's Cafeteria is undergoing a Milton million-dollar renovation. Palace Theater underwent a million dollars of renovation to celebrate its 100th birthday last year, and there's more good news coming in a short period of time. And finally, another exciting partnership we're working on is for the Broadway Arts Center. This is a great concept which will help Broadway become the hub for the creative and performing arts community, providing affordable artist housing and incubated performance space that can help support our retail and our theaters. We have great partners. The Department of Cultural Affairs is leading the charge in art space and Actors Fund, who have brought ideas like this to reality in other cities, and we're working through a planning grant for the National Endowment for the Arts to build our concept for Broadway. And yes, our beloved streetcar. Of course, the thing that so many people have talked about for some time is now coming to fruition. We're excited about the downtown L.A. streetcar that would not only build a better transportation system for Broadway and all of downtown, but have we seen in other cities, it is an economic development area for historic areas. People have, in downtown, have worked on this for some time, such as CCA's Red Car Advisory Group and the CRA, but bringing the discussion under Bringing Back Broadway has really given it a shot in the arm, and we expect to be under construction for the streetcar if all goes according to plan by 2014. Now, we could briefly see a short video on our streetcar that will be shown in our monitors.
Get ready for the first trip on your beautiful new streetcar. All aboard!
So Shirley Temple becomes conductor number one and starts the operation of the new streamlined streetcars at Los Angeles, the latest in big-town transportation on rail.
We now have the population, we now have the spirit, we now have the movement, we now have more and more tourists coming downtown than ever before.
L.A. is a place you can live, L.A. is a place you can work, L.A. is a place you can play, and downtown L.A. is now the heart and soul of that movement.
And the streetcar seems to be something that everybody just enjoys using. It's clean and totally safe.
But we found property along the streetcar line immediately began selling at a premium, a significant premium.
20 years ago, you could probably buy dirt down here for $10, $15, $20 a square foot. At the peak in 2007, the value of land down here was probably $300 a square foot.
As far as the retail development, when we started in the Pearl, there was maybe a half a dozen businesses down here. There's over 400 today. Impact, especially on opening up areas for development, I mean, it was just astounding.
When the streetcar was first announced, I was pretty nervous. The engineers came up with a schedule for building a streetcar, which was a block a week, one lane, out of commission, not taking the sidewalks out, not taking the bulk of the street out. It becomes iconic. I mean, you know, people talk about it, they see it. It's now in our advertising for the city. If somebody takes a picture of Portland and puts it somewhere, often it will feature the streetcar. People just love being on a streetcar. It's just fun.
I think a lot of people don't necessarily understand what a streetcar is. It runs in the lane of traffic. When the streetcar's not there, the cars drive right over the tracks as if it wasn't there. It really can be thought of as a bus that's on rails. They're quiet and efficient. It might be a better means of transportation for its environmental benefits and the carbon gas reductions because of electricity. It's a walk extender that you can easily hop on and off of and circulates you just through the area of downtown. There's lots of other systems out there that are meant to bring people into downtown, whether it be light rail, subway, buses, or even the automobile.
What do you do with that last mile, that last quarter mile between where you get off of the light rail or the subway, and you need to get to where you want to go downtown?
The last element that's been missing is the urban streetcar system that connects some of the urban rail and connects with the metro. That piece of the puzzle is all dependent upon local funding, and if that funding can come through, we can have a robust system.
So I see the streetcar as sort of the connective tissue between all of our neighborhoods, you know, to allow each neighborhood to still function on its own and have its own rich and interesting character, but to be very well-connected and easily accessible to the other neighborhoods.
We're really quite familiar with Los Angeles, but I don't think anybody down there has any idea of what the impact is going to be with the streetcar and tying together the various downtown neighborhoods. I mean, it's going to be really significant.
That's just a little taste of what's coming with the streetcar, but an ACOM study conducted earlier this year shows that the streetcar will create more than 9,000 jobs, generate $1.1 billion in economic development, generate 25.5 million in new tourism revenue each year, and generate 47 million in city revenues over 25 years. Certainly something worth investing, not only for the transportation support and improvements it will provide, but for many other reasons. Now, the reason Bringing Back Broadway has come so far and the streetcar has come so far is because we have many talented, skillful people volunteering their time to make this possible. With us today are a group of people who are doing that each and every day to not only revitalize Broadway and work on the streetcar, but are working throughout downtown to really make a difference. And I want to at this time recognize these individuals individually and thank them for their hard work and their dedication. And let me begin with Miguel Acuna, and on behalf of CDD, participates in the Broadway Marketing and Economic Development Committee and has been very helpful with our CDBG grants. Clyde Allen is a committee member, volunteer, and as I mentioned your name, you might want to raise your arm. Clyde Allen is a committee member, volunteer, and for those of you who follow Broadway on Facebook and Twitter, Clyde deserves a very special shout-out for doing volume of historical research and providing us with factoids to share for each day of year during our Broadway 100th Centennial Celebration. Dennis Allen and Eric Metz. Dennis is the Executive Director of L.A. Streetcar, Inc., and Eric is his right hand. In fact, Dennis has told me that Eric is so important to this effort that if they are both ever on a sinking ship, I should save Eric. Dennis brings Dennis brings real estate experience to transit planning and has been instrumental in making things happen for the streetcar. Blair Bestin, the new Executive Director of the Historic Downtown Bid. Blair has years of experience downtown and believes in Broadway, so we know this will be a strong and long-lasting relationship. Robin Blair has been our champion for the streetcar amongst the metro staff and has taught us a lot about how the streetcar will make the entire metro system work even better. Russell Brown, a Broadway trustee who has been with us since day one and who has co-authored a joint planning and transportation committee for Broadway. Thank you, Russ. Tom Karanza, Jay Kim, and Amir Sadadi from the Department of Transportation. We reached out to them to from day one and told them we wanted to do something special, and they have been there beside us every step of the way. The Streetscape Plan, the Streetcar Plan, Transit Demand Management Ideas, bike sharing, you name it, they have been with us every step of the way. Sharam and Michael Delajani, Broadway trustees, streetcar board members, and owner of our Broadway's beautiful owner of four Broadway beautiful theaters. The Delajani family's generosity and support has meant so much to make this a success. Linda Dishman, and she has certainly been a partner in this, she, as many of you know her, works at the L.A. Conservancy and has been so helpful from the moment we started to think about how we preserve many of these beautiful buildings on Broadway. Adrian Fine, and speaking of Conservancy staff, Adrian is a new addition to the team from this past year, and he's already neck-deep in Broadway projects. He's a member of the Sign District Working Group and our planning committee. Olga Garay English, all of you know her, and Olga is a creative and enthusiastic force and a Broadway trustee. She always keeps Broadway in mind and has brought us a lot of great ideas and projects. She is the lead on the Broadway Arts Center concept, and she and her staff are always pushing ideas forward about how we can share the cultural legacy of Broadway. Eric Gutshahl, used to be a resident in the Eastern Columbia Building and has remained one of our marketing and economic development committee members because he believes in what we are doing, and we're very, very glad to have him. Rebecca Harrington was recruited for the effort by Shiraz Tangri from Alston &amp; Bird and is a member of our Sign District Working Group. Tara Hammacher is a Broadway trustee with a great knowledge of Broadway's history. She was part of the working group for the Broadway Entertainment Committee Design Overlay and is on our Sign District Working Group. She also serves as a Cultural Heritage Commissioner. Gary Lee Moore, Mike Cantor, and Lem Paco from the Bureau of Engineering. So much of what we do on Broadway is related to infrastructure, and we're very thankful for their help and for the assistance on so many of Bureau of Engineers staff from street services to street lighting, sanitation, and B permitting, they have been very, very helpful. Ed Kelsey is the co-chair for our Broadway Theaters Committee and is a huge asset to Bringing Back Broadway. He serves on the Board of the League of Historic American Theaters and works as the general manager of the Orpheum Theater. Ed has put together almost as many lectures and presentations about Broadway as we have, and he is a wealth of knowledge and is very generous with his time and talents. We certainly want to thank Building and Safety, but Oram David Lara and all their crew. They are a partner in this in so many ways and have given of their time to get us where we are. Karen Lilja-Gren, she is co-chair for the Joint Planning and Transportation Committee, is on our Sign District Working Group, and has put hundreds of hours into code study for historic commercial reuse. She is responsible for so many of the adaptive reuse projects we see downtown, and we are fortunate to have her on our team in so many ways. And certainly the Planning Department, from Mike Legrand, Nick Marzich, Courtney Schoenwald, Ken Bernstein, Lambert Geisinger, Edgar Garcia, Patricia Defender, Er, Alan Bell, Kevin Keller, Connie Pallini Tipton, and Simone Passchott from the City Planning Department. Certainly great partners in getting this through. Sed Moses has been described as the downtown nightlife and press scenario. We know him as a Broadway trustee and co-chair of our Marketing and Economic Development Committee. Sed's 213 Ventures owns almost a dozen restaurants and bars downtown, including Broadway Bar, which is our favorite happy hour watering hole. Terrence McFarlane is the Executive Director of L.A. Stage Alliance. He is a Broadway trustee, has served as co-chair of our theater committee, and is a true friend to this effort. Amber Martinez is in our Marketing and Economic Development Committee and a Broadway resident in the Chapman Building. Boris Matzials is a Broadway trustee and president of the Historic Downtown Bid. He is a partner in the Haas Building, which has been restored and reactivated since the inception of the Bringing Back Broadway. John McCree is a trustee for Bringing Back Broadway and another example of city leadership lending of their time to this effort. Dave Nubekker is here to represent CRA, and certainly with the support of CRA, we have seen some initial funding for the streetcar system and our Streetscape Plan. Adele Yellen and Anne Peaks. Adele is a Broadway trustee and Anne is her right hand. The entire team at Grand Central Square and the Million Dollar Theater are one of a kind. Her husband Ira was one of the pioneers of adaptive reuse, and Adele has a strong and enthusiastic vision for Bringing Back Broadway. Rocky Rockefeller is a talented architect who is working with us on historic commercial reuse. Ed Rosenthal is a committee member and one of the brokers who has made a number of projects come together downtown. Isaac and Eric Shomov, longtime historic core property owners and developers who acted on their own vision for Spring Street about five or six years ago and have turned a blighted area into one of the most desirable urban residential neighborhoods in the city. George Smallwood is with CDD and is a member of our Marketing and Economic Development Committee. Kent Smith is the Executive Director of the Fashion Business Improvement District, a Broadway trustee and streetcar board member. Melanie Smith and Valerie Watson with Melendres Design Partners. They designed the Broadway Streetscape Master Plan and have been so involved with planning for a better pedestrian-friendly Broadway, they are essential to our team. Shiraz Tangri is a longtime Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council member and committee member who serves as a Broadway trustee and a member of the number of our committees and working groups, including planning, transportation, and the Sign District Working Group. Irv Taylor is with Metro and was a big part of the streetcar planning effort in its very early days. Pierre Tolankani manages the story building on Broadway and serves as a Broadway trustee as well as a member of the Historic Broadway Downtown Bid. Jose Luis Valenzuela is with L.A. TC and is a Broadway trustee and a member of the Broadway Theaters Committee. Ann Williams is here representing Carol Schatz, Hal Bastian, Justin Weiss, and all the folks at CCA and the Downtown Center Bid. Brady Westwater is the honorary mayor of downtown, and so there's not much about Bringing Back Broadway that Brady has not been involved with. Committees, activities, projects, events, you name it, ideas, Brady is there. Hills Ben Wright is a longtime Broadway theater supporter with so much knowledge about the history of Broadway and a leader of the Los Angeles Historic Theater Foundation. And last but not least, I want to give a huge thank you to Jessica Wellington-McLean, my Executive Director for Bringing Back Broadway. She's She's been with me for over five years, starting as my planning deputy and staffing me on Plum, and she has been on the Broadway Initiative since it started. In fact, she wrote, along with others, the actual documents to get it started. So ladies and gentlemen, I know this was a long presentation,
Yes.
But I did want to not only present to the city all the activity on Broadway, but more specifically and importantly, to thank all the volunteers that we have here who are making a difference on Broadway, on the streetcar, and all of downtown. We really, really appreciate your time and effort, not only for us who live here and play here and work here now, but for future generations to come. Thank you so, so much for your efforts.
Councilman Weisar, that was a great presentation. Do you have one speaker on the queue? Councilmember Garcetti.
I will be brief because that was incredible, and you, I think, included everybody. You forgot to thank your agent and your lawyer, but besides that, I think you got everybody. I just want to thank the crowd that's assembled around you and you, Councilmember Weisar. Los Angeles is often, all the ingredients that we have for our future, we know, are very much embedded in our past, and we don't have a failure of execution, we have a failure of imagination. And by reimagining our past and our future together, you all have been the visionaries for what this city can and will be, whether it's streetcars downtown, cat parks in Hollywood. Maybe we'll be inspired to have a streetcar along Hollywood Boulevard and we'll have a cat park downtown. This is the kind of city where if we dream again, we will be great again, and you've certainly set us down that pathway, so congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. I want to congratulate you, Councilman Weisar. That was very comprehensive and well-deserved.
And if not one of the longest presentations, it ranks
You were very close.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you very much.
You were very close.
Thank you again.
All right. Our next presenter, as the podium is cleared, is District Nine. Councilmember Perry, we have the Colburn School. Are we ready? And as that is being assembled, I do want to take a moment, and we rarely get to recognize them, I want to thank Officer Johnson, Officer Carter, Officer Morris, Officer Duarte for their help in keeping the chamber quiet and focused on the presenters and minimizing the conversations that are not connected to the activity on the floor.
Now, now, how's that for high class? That that was nice, wasn't it?
That was very nice. Ready to run.
Come on. What? Do you want some more? No, 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 no. This is, this is really nice. And I, I've worked with the Colburn School for many, many, many years on Grand Avenue, and we have the president and CEO, Sel Carden, and Wendy Kelman, who is here with us. She is the chairman of the board, and they are also joined by Allison Sampson, Senior Vice President of Advancement and External Affairs, and I believe these are the students? Those are the students, yes. Jonah Levy and Joss
Lauren.
Lauren. Lauren, what's your last name, Warren? Lauren Ewing. Thank you very much for your beautiful brass skills this morning. I want to ask you to join me in celebrating the Colburn School and to thank them for their distinguished service and contributions to the cultural and educational life of the city of Los Angeles. Since 1950, the Colburn School has been providing students with the highest quality performing arts education, boasting a renowned faculty and several performance opportunities within state-of-the-art facilities. With the help of successful businessman and avid musician Richard D. Colburn, the Colburn School became an independent nonprofit institution in the 1980s. It now educates more than 2,000 students who attend classes in the Conservatory of Music, the School of Performing Arts, the Trudy Zipper Dance Institute, and the Academy located in the heart of downtown Los Angeles, neighboring the Walt Disney Concert Hall, the Music Center, and the Museum of Contemporary Art. It is uniquely situated to add to the cultural life of Los Angeles. Now, in addition to educating some of the most promising students in performing arts, the school has presented outreach programs to more than 15,000 children in underserved areas of Los Angeles, and offers more than 300 performances on an annual basis, a great majority of them free to the community. The Colburn Conservatory of Music is one of the only music schools in the nation to offer scholarship support, including room, board, and tuition to all students. In 2007, it realized a major campus expansion that provided more classroom, rehearsal, and practice space, as well as the addition of a community and public area, including a performing arts library, concert halls, and a cafe. In tribute to the school's initiatives to outreach to the community and in honor of Richard D. Colburn's dedication to music and to education, Second Street between Grand Avenue and Olive Street has been renamed Colburn Way in his honor. In December of last year, I joined school officials and the Colburn family to mark this special day and to unveil the new signs. It was a wonderful moment, and I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight all of them and the school for enriching the cultural life of our city and supporting our efforts to make Grand Avenue one of the city's great art corridors. And now, it is my pleasure to invite the president and CEO of the school to say a few words.
Councilwoman Perry, almost four decades ago, Richard Colburn had a dream of creating a world-class performing arts institution in the heart of Los Angeles, and working closely with you, Councilwoman Perry, he identified a location on Grand Avenue, and now that vision has been fully realized in our state-of-the-art campus that serves more than 2,000 students in music and dance and drama each year. And on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our students, our faculty, and staff, we are so pleased by this honor that recognizes Mr. Colburn's great contributions to the city of Los Angeles, not only to the Colburn School, but to so many performing arts organizations here in Los Angeles, including the Opera, the Philharmonic, among others. This would have been his 100th birthday, and so it's particularly appropriate that he's recognized. So thank you, Councilwoman Perry, and thank you, City Council, for this distinct honor.
Okay. How about one more round? Oh, yes. One again. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, we can call this meeting to an end. I believe we have a number of councilmembers to fill the quorum, so this meeting is not to an end. This meeting is now in session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Heller, Concarde, Niss, Englander, Garcetti, Weisar, Caress, Corian, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zein, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First time of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Garcetti moves, and Councilmember
Avenue and Olive Street has been renamed Colburn Way in his honor. In December of last year, I joined school officials and the Colburn family to mark this special day and to unveil the new signs. It was a wonderful moment, and I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight all of them and the school for enriching the cultural life of our city and supporting our efforts to make Grand Avenue one of the city's great art corridors. And now, it is my pleasure to invite the president and CEO of the school to say a few words.
Councilwoman Perry, almost four decades ago, Richard Colburn had a dream of creating a world-class performing arts institution in the heart of Los Angeles. And working closely with you, Councilwoman Perry, he identified a location on Grand Avenue, and now that vision has been fully realized in our state-of-the-art campus that serves more than 2,000 students in music and dance and drama each year. And on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our students, our faculty, and staff, we are so pleased by this honor that recognizes Mr. Colburn's great contributions to the city of Los Angeles, not only to the Colburn School, but to so many performing arts organizations here in Los Angeles, including the Opera, the Philharmonic, among others. This would have been his 100th birthday, and so it's particularly appropriate that he's recognized. So thank you, Councilwoman Perry, and thank you, City Council, for this distinct honor.
Okay. How about one more round? One again.
All right. Well, we can call this meeting to a draw. I believe we have a number of councilmembers to fill the quorum, so this meeting is not toward, this meeting is now in session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Englander, Garcetti, Weesar, Caress, LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Garcetti moves, and Councilman Corrigan seconds. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilman Perry moves, and Councilmember Corrigan has seconds. Next order of business?
Mr. President, at this point in time, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, before doing so, there's a request from a member to continue Item One to January 31st.
Councilmember Rosendahl? You have a special? Okay.
Mr. President, before doing so, you can continue Item One without objection, if you'd like.
Yes, let's continue Item One without objection.
That leaves Item Number Two. I believe Mr. Rosendahl wishes to call that Item Special.
Okay, we'll call that Special.
Very good. Items three through nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before us?
Mr. President, we do have cards on Items Three, Four, and Seven. Excuse me, and a card on Number Five has just come in as well. So that would be Three, Four, Five, and Seven.
Senor President.
Seven and Eight, Councilmember?
For Council Number Fourteenth, Council Number Fourteenth District, Mr. Weesar, can we continue Number Three until Tuesday?
Okay, we'll continue. Item Three till Tuesday?
Mr. President, Tuesday is January 24th.
Okay.
You can continue that without objection as well.
Well, let's continue that without objection. So what does that leave us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that leaves Items Six, Eight, and Nine. Perhaps if any of the members would wish to call the Special, they could do so at this point in time.
Six, Eight, and Nine, anyone calling those specials?
Pardon me, sir, I guess a card on Item Eight has just come in as well. So that leaves Six and Nine.
Six and Nine, can we move those or any specials on Six and Nine? Seeing none. We'll move those items.
Very good, sir. Would you like to open the roll?
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes. Ten eyes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, what's that?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, Item Ten is an item for which a public hearing has been held. A motion is required.
Is there a motion for Item Ten? Councilmember, your card that notes?
Item, Item Ten, Special.
Okay, we'll call it Special.
Very good, sir. At this point in time, would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the Special? Very good. Alarcon, Englander, excuse me, Alarcon, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weesar, Caress, LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
So we have Item Eleven is an item which a public hearing has not been held?
That is correct, sir.
Do you have any cards on Item Eleven?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Okay, well, let's just move on those cards on Item Eleven. And we do have, let's see, okay. We have with us Arnold Sachs and Matt Dowd. Please come to the microphone.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. This refers to an official police garage department, road towing company that's changing its name. You know, you had a problem before with, as an example, parking garages or people that control parking lots in the city of L.A., changing their names and not being able to collect the relevant funds that are generated through business taxes. So what are the steps being taken in this situation, with we know one of the more honorable businesses in the city of L.A. is tow truck operators, operations? Just curiosity, what are the steps being taken to make sure that the public is insured to be able to get, know that the city is getting the amount of funds that would be generated through fees from impounding? And by the way, impounding with this change of ownership or operations, and thank you. I'll stop talking while you, so I don't interrupt your conversations, if that's okay with you, Mr. President. I don't want to interrupt your conversation either, Mr. President, but that's okay. Thank you for paying attention, as always. Thank you for your time and attention, and blah, 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 blah. I've got 25 more seconds on this because it's a special meeting of blah, 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 blah. Now you're paying attention. I must be making sense, or it's language you understand, one or the other. I'm not really sure. But again, going back to the impounding of vehicles per se with the official police garage, the change in the police department, how is that being handled or being addressed by the City Council?
Thank you. Our next speaker, Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you. Nice to be here on a Friday. Police garage, the official police garage, oh my goodness, that means it involves the police. So, you know, probably there could be problems, that's why we have to change some things. And I want to talk about the city, and, you know, see, the police are the ones who have to initiate the action for the towing. And just wanted to make sure that they've got all their facts straight, you know, before they tow and before they boot vehicles as well. Because, you know, I had a false booting. I got the nice Versace boot all over my car that I bought from the police auction, and that's, you know, I just came back to where, why, it's, see, I bought this car from the police auction, Bruffy's. And so these are the kind of things, and obviously it was in the police auction because it had unpaid parking tickets for the city. And so then I went and parked it, but gee, you know, my name comes up on the police, and this all connects to why we lost the permits, because that's how LAPD got to identify all the residents around Venice. So I get the car from the police garage, and then I put it in Venice, and the police go, oh gee, this has got tickets, and the city puts a boot on it after I just got it out of the police auction. I bought it, like I bought it free and clear. So these are the kind of things that can happen, and I'm not saying this is what happened in this case, but it's nice to be able to comment on it and just, you know, share my experiences with the city, and I'm so glad you're listening.
Thank you very much. So at this time, Mr. Clerk, we can adjourn the special meeting?
No, sir. First, we should vote on this matter.
Okay. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Mr. President, there's been a request to send that matter forthwith.
We'll send it forthwith.
Very good. Mr. President, would you like to adjourn the Special?
Yes, let's adjourn the special meeting. Okay, so at this point in time, Councilman Garcetti, you do have a presentation, right before we get into public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and on behalf of Councilmember Tom LaBanche, who is on jury duty as we speak, I am happy to pinch-hit for him and to welcome a good friend to our council chambers, a fellow colleague of ours from Berlin, Germany, a councilmember who has a district about the same size as all of ours, 250,000 people in the Marzahn-Hellersdorf area. Please welcome Councilmember Christian Graf to our chambers. As we know, Berlin and Los Angeles are sister cities. A number of us have spent time in Berlin, and it's a wonderful city, a place that very much like Los Angeles is a place of diversity, a place that has deep history, a place that is full of art and creativity, and a place where they have shown the rebirth, not only of a new Germany, but also of a new way of urban living, a place where bicycles are encouraged, a place where there are street cafes and an open and accepting lifestyle for folks, a place that is really at the cutting edge of what I think a city in the 21st century has been. And certainly, we are very pleased to welcome this young councilmember, in his 30s, who has been in a number of different positions, including most recently in the Berlin House of Representatives. He is with us looking at some of the work that we're doing here with Green Industries, and I know that Councilmember LaBanche and he will be signing memorandum of understanding on Monday. I believe in North Atwater Village, where some of the green industries that we have there, similar to some of the work that the councilmember has done as well in Berlin, we can learn from one another, and I know that Councilmember LaBanche has taken a number of trips to Berlin to really strengthen that sister-city relationship and to make sure that it isn't just something ceremonial, but something in which we learn from one another. Former Councilmember Smith also spent a lot of time in Berlin and other parts of Germany looking at how to take waste and make that into energy, looking at some of the ways that the solar incentives that Germany has had have been so strong. So it really gives us great pleasure to welcome you to our city, which officially is el pueblo de nuestra señora, la reina de los ángeles, which means the town of our lady, the queen of the angels. So please join me, on behalf of Councilmember LaBanche and President Wesson, of welcoming Christian Graf, councilmember from the great city of Berlin.
Welcome, Mr. Graf. A few words?
Mr. President, Mr. Dear Councilmember, thank you very much. For me, as a district councilmember of the city of Berlin, of the district of Marzahn-Hellersdorf, it's an honor to be received by you at the city council, and I would like to express my gratitude and appreciate for the opportunity to continue to build up on the fruitful relationship that the sister cities of Los Angeles and Berlin have now entertained for many years. Los Angeles and Berlin, and as well my district, Berlin-Marzahn, share a longstanding tradition for proposing common objectives. The 21st century has been the rise of new incredibly interconnected challenges and politics, economic and social levels, but also environmentally. Finding, developing, and capitalizing on new sources of energy is, as it now almost universally recognized, one of the main pillars of the sustainable future and reliable planet for generations to come. Los Angeles and Berlin both realize to need be at the forefront of this challenge and understand that there is a planet to be saved and also, done correctly, money to be made. What's needed are the best brains at the right framework to push things forward. In this spirit, we've paved the way for a project called Clean Tech Business Park Berlin. This 220-acre industrial area, we will cater for needs to companies from the clean technologies sector wishing to produce on site. 2012 marks the beginning of construction at Clean Tech Business Park, and the park is expanded to be finished in 2014. Thank you very much for this honor and the chance to be here and to speak about the chances of both cities. Thank you very much, once again, Mr. President and the councilmembers.
Thank you for joining us here in Los Angeles. Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. We do have one speaker on the queue, Councilman Rosendahl.
Yes, Be Gates. Mein Mutter und mein Vater von Deutschland. I first went to Berlin when it was divided, and it was West Berlin. And I'll never forget my experience in East Berlin at that point, where many Germans came up to me because they knew I was an American, and they thought I could help them get out of that communist situation. And of course, it was a blessing to the whole world when Berlin was united. When it was West Berlin, it was very exciting and eclectic, and now as Berlin, Berlin, the whole world goes to Berlin. There's so many people that I know that go there all the time, your arts community, your creative community is great, your economics. And I frankly think your country has been leading the way on how we deal with this recession, better than any other European country, and I dare say, maybe better than our own country here. So you folks are on the cutting edge of it, and I just want to say, Be Gates. Graz. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, where are we now?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called Special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
So I believe Item Number Two is called Special, and public comment was satisfied?
Yes, sir. Public comment for Item Number Two was satisfied in committee.
Right.
If you'd like to proceed with Item Number Two, that was called Special for Councilmember Rosendahl.
Yes, Councilman Rosendahl, Item Number Two.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It was a pleasure to meet the gentleman that I just spoke to, by the way, and he lived in East Berlin, so he truly experienced the connection of the country. Could I ask to have to come up on this one? This has to do, colleagues, on the agenda. It would have been what we call, you know, unconsent, but I wanted this to be clearly understood by folks watching this. This is funding a staff position in the mayor's office to coordinate and expedite Measure R transit design and construction projects. And I'll just editorialize for one quick second and say, thank God Measure R was passed. I thank Mike Fuer for when he initially put it before us, and our great mayor and his leadership on this, and the constant focus, and 2008, when the people said yes for that half a cent sales tax. So we have monies that we want to obviously accelerate the use of and do 12 projects simultaneously. And frankly, just another editorial, I'm looking forward to the enhancement strategy to go on the ballot so that we can actually bond against our own money and not let that gridlock in Washington, which is obscene, and I'm ashamed to hear, stop us from bringing L.A. County to where it needs to go with mass transit, so we can get out of our car. So explain what this grant is, what we're doing here, and how this will operate.
Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl, and Council President and fellow councilmembers. My name is Borja Leon. I'm the deputy mayor of Transportation, and I have Greg Spotts here. He's the project delivery director for Transportation as well. You know, councilmembers, we're encountering a new age in transportation. Measure R, passed in 2008, is perhaps one of the largest infrastructure programs in the nation, and we are just starting. In the next couple of years, Council President, we will have $11 billion out on the street in construction. And the item before the council today is really to assist the mayor's office on providing oversight through this project delivery team that was created. This will help expedite projects, and it will look out for the best interests of the city. Construction is complicated as it is, and having the mayor's office heavily involved day to day will help expedite a lot of the reviews and some of the bureaucratic issues. We will avoid delays, that means cost escalations, and obviously, the public deserves having these projects on time and under budget. The MTA and contract, the contracting industry has asked us for this specifically. I have Greg Spotts here, if you...
Yeah, let me just take you through some questions, Mr. President, on this. What is the source of the funding that Metro is providing us?
The source is the administration part of Measure R and Propositions A and Proposition C.
And how much money are we talking about?
It provides for up to $383,000 in salary reimbursement for the period of September 2011 to August 2012, plus 22% for human resource benefits, which is the standard cap rate for mayor's office grant-funded positions.
And Metro is covering the related costs as well?
Yes, that's what the 22% is for.
Is this funding for the current fiscal year or next fiscal year?
It's a 12-month period that overlaps. We've started the group in Labor Day, and we're now catching up to getting this agreement signed so that we can start billing retroactively to them.
And right now, we have staff working on these projects?
We do. We have a little bit more than two FTEs working on it, and we are engaging with, proactively on all the projects. We've worked with a number of council offices already in this work.
And what is their overall scope of their duties?
Sure, well, it goes all the way through from the planning process to the construction process. So on a project like Expo Phase Two, we're coordinating departmental review of plans. We are expediting resolution of conflicting comments. Sometimes one department makes a comment, another department makes a different comment, and instead of asking the project to figure it out, we convene people and make a decision there. We work with council offices to... We work with council offices to identify neighborhood concerns and opportunities to make the projects better and make the streetscape better. For projects that are in construction, we're actively mitigating construction-related traffic impacts, like along the 405. And also, over time, we're going to start needing to coordinate construction impacts of multiple projects working in the same area, like Expo Phase Two and the I-405 will start operating around Sepulveda at the same time.
Councilman Rosendahl, we have a...
Yeah, just one last question. How does the mayor's office plan to involve the council in policy and technical issues?
We've been working closely with council offices. A lot of the neighborhood concerns bubble up through the council offices and come to us. Occasionally, we hear about them, and our first step is to go out to the council office, and we've been collaborating very well with council staff in making sure that those community concerns get addressed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl. I do have one question regarding the timeframes and access to the schedules as projects move forward. Will the council offices have some access, or where can we find the schedule of these projects? And given all the different milestones you're achieving, where can we have access to that information?
You know, that information, we could provide, we could help provide that information. We are having monthly meetings with council offices to present the information on schedules, project scope, issues out there. So we could do it that way, or we could just send it individually to all the council offices.
Well, I worked 10 years working with the goal line as a staff person, now it's 10 years as a council member, so I understand some of the intricacies and our challenges. And so how we get in front of anticipated bottlenecks, et cetera, is something that booves everyone, so we look forward to working with you on that.
Great, thank you, Council President.
Okay, so, Councilman, we start? You're on the queue?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I was happy to work with Councilman Rosendahl and the mayor's office to bring this forward, and they've explained all the details in here, but I do want to just mention that when we were building or put our plan for it at the school district to build over 180 schools, it was so critical for us at that time, when I was on the Board of Education, to find one entity or person we could work with the city to help maneuver through the different bureaucracies, the street services, street lighting, so that it is much easier, and none of our projects got delayed. And I think that's what we're asking to do here, is to have that singular point of contact in the mayor's office with appropriate staff to work with Metro as we expedite these Measure R dollars. Otherwise, we'll see delays and other confusion that Metro probably wouldn't want to continue dealing with the city if we didn't have that point of contact. So I think it's a very good thing, small investment for a huge payout. So thanks to the mayor's office and Councilman Rosendahl for helping bring this together.
Councilman Rosendahl, one more time on the queue?
Just thank you, thank you, thank you. This is the smart way to move forward. Timing is everything. We're fed up with the gridlock in LA County, and anything we can do to expedite these Metro projects that we're all part of, that the people have voted yes for, to get us out of our car, I'm thrilled. I can tell you the West Side is looking forward to Expo Phase Two, and I'm thrilled that money from Measure R is going toward that as well, and we're going to be able, Mr. Kretz and I, to move on to the board and to play a role as they go through the West Side of Los Angeles. And colleagues, I ask for unanimous support, and then, of course, I'd like to go forth with with this.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Rosendahl. Open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Rosendahl. Thank you for being here in the chamber with us. We do... Well, our next speaker, Mr. Clerk, we can go into general comment?
Yes, sir. And again, for the record, item two we'll send forth with, per Councilmember Rosendahl's request.
Thank you, sir. That we'll go forth with. So we'll go into public comment at this time, and our first up, Carlos Marroquin. Then we'll have Cheryl Eichli, like to come on up. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Marroquin. I'm a resident of Hollywood District Four, and I'm a member of Occupy LA. I'm a homeowner's advocate. I have been working in the homeowners foreclosure issues for the past few years, and I'm here to remind you that in this year, we are expecting around 12 million new foreclosures nationwide. One of every five of those foreclosures will take place in California, many of those in the southern part of the state. And I'm here to say that we would like to see more actions taking place from the city in assisting homeowners. I am daily contacted by citizens of LA asking for help because the programs that are in place by the federal agencies are not reaching the people. So we have an opportunity to become a city that will lead in the foreclosure issues. So I urge all the council members to look for programs or look for avenues in helping the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker, good morning.
My name is Cheryl Eichli, and I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles. I speak for myself today. I live in District Four, and it looks like my councilman's doing his civic duty jury today. So I came with Carlos. I've been working with Carlos for the last couple of months on the foreclosure issue. Right now, we're helping just a handful of families Occupy Los Angeles. I want to tell you about a couple of them. The first family we started helping is the family of 79-year-old retired schoolteacher, Faith Parker, from South Central Los Angeles, and they have foreclosed upon her home but haven't yet evicted her. The other family that we're helping is Chaplain Bertha Herrera. She's 63 years old, and she's a chaplain at a hospital. They have foreclosed upon her, and they have evicted her. The sheriffs came with their weapons drawn, and there were about a dozen occupiers at her house, and they put her out. The real estate company was so worried about the occupiers being there, they called contractors with the LAPD so that the contractors could board up the house, so there was no way that anybody could get back inside the house. I understand that there's some city programs that focus on the foreclosure issue. I don't fully understand these programs. I am trying to work with the offices to find out more about what is offered through the city and what can happen. Yesterday, I went to the state attorney general's office here in Los Angeles. That's the first time I've ever done that, and the staff was very supportive. They said they want all people to write letters about their foreclosure issues to them. And these foreclosures issues, The New York Times wrote a news article called "Foreclosures Are Killing Us" because the health issues that these families deal with through going through the stress of the foreclosures is literally killing them. So we're going to have a foreclosure forum that Occupy Los Angeles puts on so that we can help the citizens of the city deal with their foreclosure issues. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Carlos Acevedria. And then Arnold Sacks.
Yes, I just have a comment on students. I go to LA Film School out here on Sunset. I just, what I don't get is you guys are quick to give student loans, right? But then you see you have the students that are stuck with this debt after school, like after school's done, you know? They give you like around six months to a year, and if you don't get a job, well, I guess you're out of luck, right? So you guys should work on giving students more like opportunities to get a job so everybody can work, not just a couple of people. You know, you guys need to understand, because all I see is, you know, you guys over here arguing back and forth, back and forth, and you guys never come up with a solution. I see just you guys need to work together instead of just always going back and forth, back and forth. Need to come up with a solution and come up with it fast, because if you notice Mexicans, Hispanics, blacks, whatever, they're the ones that work in here, right? What about if there was a day where they would not work? They won't work for you no more. Then what? Then what? You know what I mean? So it's like you come up with a solution before the people come up with a solution for you, and it would be not to work, and then what? Nothing runs, everything stops, right? So think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Eichli.
I've got 22 seconds, right? Just, I'm a student, yo, and you guys just need to get it right, man, because if I was sitting right there, I guarantee you, I would make the people proud and happy. So there wouldn't be no problems, there wouldn't be no back and forth. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Arnold Sacks, and then we'll have Matt Dow.
Yes, thank you again. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Really quick, back to the OPG garage, would they be eligible to tow this car? As you can see, it has a boot on it. I don't know if the public can catch this picture of this vehicle with an official boot, would the police garage just tow this vehicle with this boot, just out of curiosity? Now, again, and thank you for allowing the public to maybe reopen item number two regarding the Measure R Transit Funds. But as you heard the man at the desk discussing, the funds were available from August to September of this year, August 11, 2011 through September 2012. So this is January, middle of January 2012. What was the gridlock to cause the council to have this item on their agenda five months after it was authorized by Measure R funding, which thankfully, the public passed in 2008 instead of passing or having the opportunity to pass the half-cent sales tax that might have been authorized in 2003, which would have meant that most of the projects that were being considered might be not just shovel-ready, but done or pretty close to being done. But gridlock being gridlock, and everybody's happy, so here we are in January, and you don't have, it's almost, you don't have the position filled, it's almost like the ratepayer advocate. Vote for it, and two years later, we'll maybe get to it. And then very quickly, I just wanted to discuss again CRA and its funding, and this ridiculous idea that you have 1290, AB 1290 funds. So basically, what you've done is you redefined redevelopment funds, you redeveloped redevelopment funds to separate them as 1290 funds and redevelopment funds.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Matt Dow.
Yes, Presentation Friday, so I thought I'd come down with one of my best things, see how it looks on TV. Oh, doing so good. We're doing some session work right now in some studios, so it's all good. But look, I feel like I'm on the bridge right now. I'm on the bridge of the pension fund. Here's Tom Le Bonje. I'm gonna wave, hey, Tom, boom, hit the rocks. Capsized the pension fund, billions of dollars. But it's great with Tom. We're up here on the bridge. So anyway, let me quote the great Phil Lynott from Thin Lizzy. "Down from the glen came the marching men with their shields and their swords to fight the fight they believed to be right and overthrow the overlords." I love that. So it's a lot of fun here, but I've got to talk about the decorum, because this is the only place I've got, according to Eric. So where's Herb Wesson? Because I need to talk to Herb Wesson. And see, and here's why you shouldn't have these complex rules, and this is why the Ninth Circuit struck them down in Santa Cruz. It's because you have to listen to every single word I say now and everybody to make sure that the enforcement is all equal, or there's an as-applied case against it. It's better just to not listen so closely. And just like the federal judge said, let them have their two minutes, it's only two minutes. It doesn't hurt you. Do you need a Band-Aid for anything I've said? That's the line we'll be using in the court, that's what the attorney will say. Gee, oh, you're, so you're not even removing me for 30 days anymore. So clearly, I won. I got an injunction. I lost $50,000, and they offered me five.
Thank you very much.
That's respect.
Mr. Clerk was in front of us.
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to items called special. Our first item would be item number four, called special for cards.
Number four, we do have a couple of speakers, Arnold Sacks and Matt Dow.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. While you're taking this action to remove this item from the ballot, and what was interesting is regarding some of the comments you might have read in the newspaper, Councilman Kretz mentioned that something about underground pornography shoots going on. Well, if they're underground pornography shoots, they're underground for a reason, and having a condom in the film won't necessarily address the fact that they're going to come up to the light. But while you're at this, just to change the subject, because the county board of supervisors in their wisdom have gone after lap band surgery, maybe you could amend this amendment, like you've amended redevelopment funds, and put on your agenda requirements for lap band surgery. I mean, that's an important item, that's a public health issue, condoms in films is a public health issue, it's adult entertainment, and getting involved in adult entertainment is something, it'll be actually the closest you'll come to being stars in the movies.
Our next speaker, Matt Dow.
All right, yes, well, this is a lovely item for Friday presentations. You know, like, see, Herb Wesson's got problems if someone wants to talk about this, and this is exactly the kind of thing, I just don't know what I can say anymore. It's a prior restraint, because I'd really like to talk about it, but if pussy is out, then how do you even talk about this item?
Okay, thank you, and City Attorney?
The City Attorney's Office recommends this item be received and filed.
See no objection? That'll be the order. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number five, called special for cards.
Okay, item number five. Matt Dow.
Channel 35. Yeah, this one caught my eye. Unfortunately, Mr. Reyes and Weeza, relative to funding for installation of banners. And you see a bunch of these, and there's another one on the agenda, but they always say what it's for. What's the banners? What do they say? What are they about? So all of a sudden, this one hits the shady radar, the shadar, because they're not saying what the banners are for, and probably because once it hits the Agenda G, public comment. And so anyway, just strikes me as shady, but it's Friday, of course. I'm waving, channel 35, Tom Le Bonje, everybody, thank you.
Okay. Open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next item?
That brings us to item number seven, called special for cards.
Okay, we have Arnold Sacks and Matt Dow.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Again, item 1290 funds and where they come from. You know, it's great. The Brown Act mentions that you don't have to speak about items on the, not on the agenda. So when people ask, oh, I know, ridiculous questions like, where do these items get their start from, it's state legislation, but where does the funding source come from? Everybody answers, or nobody answers. Mr. City Attorney, maybe you could answer. But let me just point out here something interesting that occurred regarding 1290 funds. This is from January of last year, January 26. This is from January of last year, January 26th. CD 7, item on the agenda 081647 S2. Installation of security cameras. Oh, wait. This is accept funds from the community redevelopment CRA in amount not to exceed $360,000 for the purchase and installation of security cameras in and around Council District 7 redevelopment project area. Because in August 19th of 2011, item number 11111423, transferred $360,000 into the Council District 7 portion of the AB 1290 Fund, number 53P, to assist in funding security cameras for the LAPD Foothill Division. So you're getting funds from 1290 and funds from redevelopment. $360,000, that's $720,000. But they're different funds. No, 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 they're the same. No, 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 they're not. No, wait. Well, somebody will, no, nobody will answer because Brown Act says we don't, we don't talk about items on the, no, we do talk about items on the agenda. No, we don't. No, yes. What's going on? Who's on first? What's on second? I don't know. Third base. It's so phony. And then you look at an item later on that says...
Mr. President, he is not really talking about this item.
Okay, well, your time's up. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Yes, it's all lovely and friendly on this side of the ropes just because it's Friday. And oh my goodness, speaking of LeBonge, see, he's going, he's making a good point. And we had one of these the other day. It's like, you know, they're moving this money around really quick, and then there's cups and everything. And yeah, they lift up the cup, and there's the money. And then boom, put down the cup. Tom LeBonge, lift up the cup. So, yeah, it's, we talked about it before. We've got problems, but there's nothing you can do about it. And, you know, the new 15th district councilman, you know, unfortunately, I hope he don't get caught up in all the shadiness. So let me shout out to Tom LeBonge. And this is exactly the thing I'm talking about. Just let the guy have his comment. Thank you very much. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, our next item?
That brings us to item number eight, called Special for Cards.
Okay, Matt Dowd, number eight. All right. Yes, thank you again. Nice to be back on Channel 35 on a Friday. See, here's a street banner. This is the one I mentioned earlier. Okay, radar goes off. Boom, Occidental College. Eric Garcetti, all the problems come up. I don't know why. Just Occidental College just goes ding ding ding, Eric Garcetti. I don't know. See, I've been here a long time, and I could run the meeting better than these guys. They've got to ask the clerk, what do they do next? They forget to vote the item.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
Yes, I am. Because it all comes back to Eric Garcetti, who's got, you know, connections.
He's talking about banners.
Right. Well, okay, the 125th anniversary of Occidental College. Okay, you know what? Here's something else I've found, too. And Zuma Dog will like this one. It's the City of Los Angeles non-event. Occidental College, no, I'm just having fun. It's Friday. We're waving off the bridge to all our homies. It's all a lot of fun. Thank you so much. In fact, let me say, let me say because I'm in favor of this item. Thank you, City Council. Thank you. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 10, called Special for Councilmember Cardenas.
Okay, we have Arnold Sacks, and you have one minute, Mr. Sacks, on item 10.
Thank you again. One minute. Wow. This is, again, rollover funding from budget year 2011, 2012 to amended by $212 million, which consists of $85 million plus change in prior year carryover resources plus $126 million in encumbrances. And that will make a revised budget total of $671 million plus change. So out of that 600, out of that actual $400 million that you had as the original budget, how does that break down into encumbrances and rollover funding? Because we hear that because the CRA has been dissolved, all these projects are in jeopardy. Like the Clean Tech project in jeopardy, like the Garage.
Thank you very much.
Yo, thank you, sir. It's...
Thank you very much. Okay, let's open the roll. We do have Councilman Cardenas. You call this special?
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that the technical amendments have been circulated. Councilmembers, the technical amendments have dollar amounts in it. But what needs to be understood with what the legislature and the governor did to local governments and redevelopment and what the courts did, whether we agree with them or not, it's, they have spoken. The bottom line is those numbers that you see on the amendments only have to do with projects that were previously contracted. And we wanted to make sure, this was agendized earlier this week. We wanted to make sure with the CLA, the CAO, and our City Attorney's Office that we are in accord with the New World Order on redevelopment dollars, and we are. So I just wanted, that's the reason why I called it special, to make sure that we had an opportunity to get the amendment correct, properly worded. So we're following all the new order of CRA allotments and projects of the past and present. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas. Let's open the roll. See anyone else in the queue? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to leave at 1:00 P.M. on Tuesday, January 24 for city business. Councilmember Perry requests to leave at 11:45 on Tuesday, January 24 for city business. Councilmember Reyes requests to leave at 12:30 on Wednesday, January 25. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on Friday, January 27. Councilmember LeBonge requests to arrive at 11:30 on Friday, January 27. And Councilmember LeBonge requests to leave at 11:30 on Tuesday, January 31st.
Without objection?
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Seeing no announcements, adjourning motions. Please stand. Councilmember Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to adjourn in memory of the great Etta James, who passed away this morning at the age of 73. She is perhaps one of the greatest rhythm and blues singers and was a jazz singer, and her music is timeless. Her song, "At Last," continues to be a ballad loved by so many. Her rich voice influenced generations of singers who came after her, from Tina Turner to Bonnie Raitt to Christina Aguilera. She had a six-decade recording career and began at the top of the rhythm and blues charts with her single in 1955, "The Wallflower," better known as "Roll With Me, Henry." This quickly made her a national star. But of course, she's best known for "At Last," the powerhouse ballad that became ballad, that became a hit in 1961 and has been enshrined in the Grammy Hall of Fame. The other song with which she became inextricably connected with was "I'd Rather Go Blind," which she said she co-wrote in 1968 with her friend Ellington Jordan while he was in prison. She was the child of a single teenage mother and grew up in South Los Angeles during World War II. She stood out at an early age and made her mark singing in the choir of St. Paul Baptist Church. The church's music minister, a prominent figure in gospel circles known as Professor James Earl Hines, quickly singled her out for solos when she was just five or six years old. In addition to her two sons, Ms. James is survived by Artist Mills, her husband of 42 years, and several grandchildren.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. Other adjourning motions? Councilman Cardenas?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's with great sadness I announce the passing of Shirley Molly Berg. She passed away on December 19, 2011, and she was born on December 11, 1934. And the circumstances of her passing is she succumbed to leukemia. Shirley Berg was born on December 11, 1934 in Chicago, Illinois, to Martha and Samuel Kaplan. She married Bill Berg on September 12, 1954. Shirley and Bill moved to California in November of 1956. Shirley is a graduate of Los Angeles Valley College. She lived in Arlita and Pacoima for over 52 years and was very active in the community. She's the past president of the Arlita Chamber of Commerce and Residents Association and was involved with the Arlita Neighborhood Council, Arlita Looky Lou's, Neighborhood Watch. Shirley has been members of Temple Beth Torah, which started in what now is Arlita. For 53 years, Shirley sang in their choir for 52 years and served on the Board of Trustees. She volunteered for many other nonprofit organizations such as North Valley Jewish Community Center, City of Hope, Na'amat Jewish War Veterans SOVA Food Bank. Shirley loved Judaism with all of her heart. Shirley's favorite time of the week was Sabbath, or Shabbat. The family was always together for Shabbat dinner. Shirley lit the candles and sang the candle blessing every week. In fact, Shirley's last meal was a traditional Berg Shabbat dinner of chicken and various side dishes. She ate well and even had her favorite dessert, baked apples prepared by her daughter-in-law as a special request from Shirley. Family was the most important thing in Shirley's life. Shirley was proud of her grandchildren. She was so excited when they were born. Shirley made sure they attended every school performance, piano and dance recital, each play, choir, concert, class presentation, play, and musical performance. Shirley lived life to the fullest. She lived and died on her terms. Mr. Berg, her husband, is a colonel, but Shirley was definitely in charge. Shirley passed away in her home in Arlita. She's survived by her husband of 57 years, Bill Berg, and her two children, Marcy and Neil, two grandchildren, Anna and Rebecca. And on a personal note, I've had the fortune to be able to get to know the Berg family, and Shirley definitely was a leader, an outspoken individual, and someone that I personally appreciated speaking out on behalf of her, her family, and her community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none. One brief announcement. Harry Yedo's birthday yesterday. Harry, happy birthday to you, sir. Thank you for your support in the City Council. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.